All right, Brian, I'm gonna come past you then. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I just, a quick reminder, anyone with public participation, which, talking to four people now. We just want you to limit it to five minutes. If you wanna say anything, public participation, just come up, state your name. Please make sure your cellphones are turned off or silent, which I should probably do myself. And, uh, I'd like to call meeting order at 7:01 PM. Can I get a, let's see, approval for the meeting minutes from November? What else do you need? Well?
Well.
Thank you. Well, probably two more glasses on that, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion, two for the, um, let's see, two for the minutes? Call and trainee? That was three I's. Okay, correspondence?
This is the shortest list I've ever had. A draft copy of the minutes from the November 12th meeting went out. Frank has submitted an application for employment for part-time labor for Christopher Homer for the meeting tonight. And I did forget to say the last meeting that water mills were made, uh, nailed down. So they went out at the beginning of November. That's all I have.
All right, thanks Christine. Frank and John, DPW report.
I just got a couple of them, and John's got some. Bill left the paperwork for Orange Rockland for the holiday lights. He faxed it to them. He emailed Robbie Green about the new dump truck. He said the body, the truck body is there, is there. Raphael's working on one of the, another truck for another municipality. And once he's done with that one, we are next.
Next as in, two weeks?
Yeah, he's looking at mid, mid-December.
Okay, all right, well, at least you got a date now. Okay, that's good.
To work on it or to get it?
To get it, no. And then the welcome to Decker's Hill sign has been moved. Should be coming any, any day.
All right, um, all those trees are ready for tree lighting next week. Lights are on Main Street. The lights that are up are probably the only lights that are gonna go up this year, the holiday lights, because we got a lot of work to fix them up. And we might wanna think about start replacing it in the next few years. Last week, we sent out the lighting copper layers on time. Eleven fifteen, I got a receipt, so the health department asked if they were sent out by the fifteenth. We have that. Tomorrow, we'll be taking down the tarp at the play, on the playground. And then we'll be decorating the village hall next week, so. We kept up with the storm on Friday.
Anyone have any questions for DPW?
John, you said all the letters were mailed out already?
Yeah, they were mailed out.
They had to be out by the fifteenth.
Fifteen, yeah. Eleven fifteen, twenty-four.
Did you mail them to our post office?
Yes. I actually was late. I broke them down by P.O. box, by street billing, and out of town, so.
Let's leave it.
I haven't got mine yet.
Yeah, well, you're, okay, that's good, that's good to know. Because actually, we haven't had a lot of phone calls on it, or like, okay, it was a little.
One today. Somebody did, she came in. I don't know if it was the same person, but somebody did come in and.
How many people are on that list that got mailings about?
Eighty-six.
Diane, all total.
Well, eighty-nine told them, but he's.
Okay. And each one of them was for the same thing?
Well, eighty-six were for.
Unknowns.
Unknowns. And then four that we know that galvanized, that they had, it'd be a separate letter had to go out to them.
Okay. Just a question I have for you. Does it, do you wanna, since people got letters, does it make any sense maybe to send out to some of those people a constant contact? Or do you not wanna get overwhelmed?
Let's wait and see how.
We might have, this might take a little while. I was just concerned a car pulled up to the front door, but that's, we'll see if he comes in. We might, uh, all I was gonna say is we might have contacts for each one of those people. So if you guys had a list of people and we have.
I have, we do.
We might even be able to send them some other way.
Just like, you know, we went to a class last week, and one of the things they told, for the next four years, anybody that does not respond to this first letter, we have to send another letter out for the next four years until we hear back.
Until you hear, okay.
And if they, people down the road, if they know they have galvanized and they choose not to change it, we have to get a letter from them in writing that they know what's going on and aren't choosing not to take care of it.
If at any point, do we have to certify letter those? Certified?
As of right now, no.
No, no.
Christine, do you have a copy of those letters, electronic copy?
Um, I do not have an electronic copy, but I can scan it and email it to you.
If you would just share it with the board.
Um, the only other thing I want, did you get, you got two estimates for the roofs. We're waiting on a third.
We're waiting on a third.
Okay, so just, so the board, if you didn't hear this, Brian, last time, or if I didn't bring this up, I just wanna say this. I asked, um, DPW to get estimates on, we have four roofs. So we have the pavilion, we have the salt shed out back, we have the, the water treatment plant, and we have your office is the fourth one. I asked them to get estimates from some roofers, which I know they buried the two that I have. When we get all three, I'm gonna write a letter to Senator Scafis and see if we can get some grant money to update the park pavilion. If anyone's been underneath it in one spot, and I think it's starting to, it's pretty rough underneath, so. Yeah, so hopefully, again, I didn't think it was that much, to be honest with you. When I was thinking four roofs, I'm like, move. But I didn't think it was as much as it was gonna be. But when we get more information, we'll get that out. Okay.
Frank or John, do either of you know when the VFW is gonna take the flag stand?
The banners, they're all, they're down.
They're down. Yeah, two days it took.
They just left the poles up, that's all.
Actually, the town.
Okay. But it must have been like fairly recently.
It was.
Last week.
Last Wednesday and Thursday.
It's funny, because I had people say, whatever, the banners. But they're up from Memorial Day to Veterans Day.
I actually had just the opposite. I had two different people say to me, like, aren't they gonna take them down for winter so they don't get ruined? So, that's great.
One of the things I was suggesting, and I said, the light, buying lights and stuff, we wanna look back in the banners, just get the same size banners that in this.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
I wanna do a couple of entrances, like, welcome to. Unfortunately, now that you bring it up, the banner program that we signed up for that was supposed to do something for us, which is why we didn't use a couple of streets, did not work out. The response has just been absolutely horrible with them. So when we do rehang these veterans banners up, we're gonna have more of an area so that they're not out of the way on field road and otherwise. But I do like the idea of hanging something up for like, welcome to, or whatever else at the entrances. Town Hall, Kerry, what you got?
This Friday, we will have our tree lighting at the youth center at six thirty. The DMV reps will be here at town hall on Wednesday this week, the twenty-seventh. This Friday, they're closed. Highway Superintendent Dean Hassanmeier is retiring at the end of November. We have appointed an interim. Highway Superintendent Andy Gady will start on December first. And then we had a public hearing at our meeting last week regarding a potential ATV law. Overall, the law was that it was a little too restrictive, so our attorney's working on a new version, which we will then discuss, and have another public hearing on. Not scheduled yet.
All right, I'll see you. Curtis, welcome.
Hello. So, winter's coming. The speed trailers have been pulled off the roads to stop them from being damaged. There's going to be a push with seatbelt enforcement, cellphone enforcement, speed enforcement. Stay off your phone, buckle up, don't speed. And we also have a Stop VWI campaign going on. It's from the eleventh through January one, so don't hurt getting driven. So just expect to see the cars out there and people being stopped. And, uh, let's see, December eighth will be our new officer's first day. And that's Anthony Gorlachi. He'll be graduating the academy on the second. His first day will be.
Okay. Thank you. Brian, what do you have for fire chase report?
All right, I don't have the calls where Rob said they might have been reported on last meeting. The only thing that I have for him, he was letting me know that the, they had training on November eighth, there was some chimney fire training, I guess up at the firehouse. On November twenty-seventh, they're doing a technical rescue training on high angle rescue technology. And on, sorry, I'm trying to read those. November fifteenth, they were training up at the federal prison with the officers up there. The warden asked them to come back because he loved what was going on. They did a smoke, I guess, escape type training in one of the rooms that they are currently remodeling. With a, they also did a scout packs and rescue drags also with prison. And that is all I have from Rob.
Okay, just to tell you, there was no report because you were, and were not here last meeting.
The call report for October?
You get a copy of that in your email?
I actually just looked, and I didn't have that.
But you do get it.
I didn't have one in my email, and I didn't see where the mail was.
But you do get one normally.
I believe so.
Okay. I get one, they email it to me. I don't think I've seen one yet either, but I haven't been in my email. But if I, I just wanna make sure you're getting that, you wanna report on that, that's fine, as long as, I like numbers and I like, I'm sure people wanna know what's going on.
I ask him all the time, but he's not gonna be there, just send me whatever, so.
Okay. Back to one thing you just reminded me of. Frank and John, I reached out to Frank today about the two vehicles that we're going to put through the auction. And I just wanna mention this, at the town board meeting, Dean had mentioned that he used AAR instead of Auctions International. And I believe he got a thousand dollars more for the truck that he put on there. So I got the number from him, which I forwarded to you. And I just, I just wanted, just to tell the board this, because they don't know this. I know you know this, because I sent it to you. I figured we'll try AAR auctions. They've been in every NICOM training that I've been to. They're in competition with Auctions International. The nice part about them too is they come, they take pictures, we basically do nothing other than contact them and ask them to come and do their thing. So I figured if they got, again, it's a hit or miss, but I figured why not try it? I think we did very well with Auction International last time. We got rid of a lot of stuff. But it's probably hit or miss, or who's looking for certain things, so. That's all, I just wanted to bring it up. That's all. And you kind of reminded me of what we said about.
Just giving you an update on the building, glad to help Mike up there. He had the electrical inspection on the, for the service done last week. He's just waiting for O-N-R to come hook it up. One of the things, he started mounting the brackets for the outside lights. But, um, I don't know if anybody looked at, he reached out to Robbie and let him know, that roof has no snowbreakers on it. And the other day, with all that snow, it came down, it made big piles. And Mike's afraid that if he puts these lights on or how they're gonna be positioned, snow comes down, they're gonna rip them off. So he's reached out to Robbie though. Maybe he should think about putting some snowbreakers, especially over the doors, entry door and stuff. And the garage doors are in. I talked to the guy, I guess at this time, there's no motors yet, but he told me where they want electric to be when they do put the.
There's no motors yet, because we haven't gotten two estimates on them. That's why I just don't worry. We haven't discussed that.
Well, he, uh, he let me know where he want, they need them, the electric to be for them, so that'll be thing up.
I called Mike today, actually up at the youth center this afternoon, and I spoke to him about the heating system. We did talk about that last meeting. I just wanna have both of them talk, because I know he needs to know where to put electric and heat and stuff in there. But, uh, okay. So I told him who had it or what we discussed, but, okay.
Yeah, well, he's thinking about hoping next week getting a lift in there, and then once the electric's on, they can wire up everything, so.
All right, trustee reports. I'll go with you, Brian, only because you missed, so it's all on you.
It works. Celebrations. We are pretty much all set. Thank you Christine, Kate, Maureen, Melissa for helping with getting the word out, getting all that stuff together for the upcoming tree lighting on the sixth?
Sixth.
And, um, basically, everything is looking pretty good for that. And thank you to the firehouse, because we are gonna bring back the Santa Fun Run to go around the community. I think all that is out now. And that's it for that. Uh, streetlights, I went through, and I've been working with Vinny a lot. Our streetlight situation is a little messy because we have a lot more actually updated in real life than what we have in our, right now. So it made it a little frustrating telling him which ones you wanna upgrade, yada, yada. So Saturday, I spent like, three hours driving around the entire village with my wife, and we kind of updated it all, waiting for Vinny to get back with a revised report. I submitted six additional ones, so all of Highland, all of Mount Hope Avenue, and Main Street. Main Street's not going to be completed, but is going to be started with having all brand new lights, hopefully, by New Year's.
This is what it's coming down to, date night, with your wife driving around the village?
Yeah, you know, uh, between baseball and work, what night do we have? But let's go out and look at the streetlights, babe. So.
Did you get the test?
The two, I did get the report from a couple of them that were flickering, but they were already on the list that'll be renewed, so there's no need to submit a outage or flickering light thing.
The one that's in the yard in the back here.
The flip, oh, the, also, the new arm is going to be put up and lighted down at the municipal parking lot in Main Street.
I wasn't even gonna break it up, because you put this one back here, I know it's just very, yeah. It's the one on the pole that does the whole yard in the back. The new cameras look great at night, but there's no, and I don't, I didn't know if there's a pole number for that. There's a pole number for the streetlight side, but I don't know that there's two numbers on there. There is two sets of numbers? Okay, all right.
If there's one set of numbers on the pole.
It's on that.
That's all good. One pole gets one set of numbers.
One utility pole.
Utility pole. See, now you're getting it. And there might be, what is there, two floodlights on it?
One floodlight. Is there a yard in there, there's the streetlight.
So which ones out? The flood?
Flood, yeah.
Did you go out and check that out?
Didn't know what? It'll be a date over.
Second date?
Yeah, another date.
She's probably watching, so babe, guess what we're doing?
I just wanna make sure of this. I know that O-N-R likes to replace, and I just wanna stress this, if you could. If they don't replace the bulb and they replace the light, I just wanna make sure it's facing down and blocked, because I don't wanna light up the neighbor's yard like this one used to.
Yeah, I put in a lot of the, with Vinny, to kind of angle them.
I just wanna say that, that's all. I don't wanna light up someone's. All right, thanks.
And that's, uh, that's all I got.
Thank you. Lance, what do you got?
Okay, um, thank you for the work you're doing with the park. Park is good for the winter. The village will be happy, we'll all be happy. John, Frank, and the guys, I'm glad. My century Santa is gonna be canceled due to a medical reason. I'll put that out, the twenty-first of December. I did minor cancer, I didn't put it on the pages yet, but due to medical reasons from the village. Okay, um, Javier and I didn't meet up together, and I think I emailed this up, and he didn't give me any new report, but I will have him definitely by the next meeting and do some violation and hand it out.
I'm hoping he's coming by next week.
Yeah, no. Um, I was here today, and a village resident stopped by saying about certain permits. And he feels that the village is going in the wrong direction with issuing a permit, because he claims the old school has no permit for certain things.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. No fault.
That's okay. I just.
A village resident stopped by while I was here in the, in the hall, I told you earlier, and he's complaining that the old school doesn't have certain permits, and now he's in force to get a permit.
Do we know what permits they're for?
Yeah, he's gonna come back and see Christine later, and then Javier's gonna talk about the permits that he has to get. And the old school, he claims, has none. He said he has to prove, and he's gonna come back.
They don't have a permit.
Right.
Yeah, well, he.
He's just gonna come back.
Well, that's gonna be, he said, he, a hundred percent, he said, I have to get a permit, and they don't have guns.
That's okay, yeah, okay. Just, can I piggyback off that? I want you to say something, go ahead, you go first. I talked to Javier, and I just wanna add this in. Javier has been driving around the village, and he has been giving a lot of violations out for people that have, that are violating and breaking our rules. And I'm not gonna go into detail about who Lance was talking about, but I'm just gonna say this. As he drives around, he notices certain things. He comes back, he sends out letters, and, um, someone was violated for building a structure that had no permits. He got no permits for it. But the structure's up, and it's probably been up well over a decent amount of time. Don't hold me exactly how long. And Javier noticed it and violated him and spoke to him about it. So I, I understand that this person is upset, and I understand that, but they got no building permits to put this pretty large structure up. So that's all I wanted to add to it.
And you mean why they got none? I said, I asked him, do you get one? He go, no. I said, even why? He goes, the old school don't have one, so why should I get one?
Sure. Yeah, I think you gotta face a lot of that initially, you know? New sheriff in town type stuff, you're gonna face a lot of that this way it was done. And when you said old school, I actually thought you meant methodology-wise.
I'm sorry.
Old school-wise, we didn't have permits, and I'm like.
The old school school story has claimed.
I got it now.
He got, he says that, so he not getting one for the doors, he not getting one for the electric.
And even if that's true, that doesn't, that's not a test of it. Mr. Rometta had reached out with some, some ideas. As he's seeing the enforceability end of, of the code as it relates to that stuff, so I'll be meeting with him, Javier, and eventually presenting something that would, I guess, mimic, sort of a comprehensive plan type review as far as that part of the code. Which I haven't dove into much, because I'm really on this end, and that's enforceability, but ultimately, it'll be me amending it with your, you know, feedback. So just on the horizon, as you're talking to him, or you're interacting, or Christine, just bear that in mind, he's got his hands in the code on an area that I haven't. So I anticipate a lot of feedback coming in the coming months. Oh, it's coming. I, so, yeah, but I'm, I'm, you're getting, you're getting the, uh, the front end, and then there's the enforceability end, right? And eventually, someone's gonna, you know, an attorney's gonna either poke a hole in, in a flaw in the code, or we're gonna catch it ourselves and as, as this being enforced, okay?
But he's gonna, he wanna, now he wants to get the permit and then go to the other end.
That's, yeah.
Which is okay.
No doubt.
So you're gonna be meeting him down at the courtroom.
Well, the other, the other attorney will be doing the prosecution. Which is why I have Javier speaking to him and asking him questions. Right. And then it circles back to me, because we do the same thing in the other municipalities that we represent similarly. He comes back to me like, we gotta fix this on the front end, because I'm having trouble enforcing it because of this or that. And I know Javier, I'll just say this, when he goes through the files, he's looking at back violations for people that have gotten violated in the past. With no enforceability. With no enforcement. No enforcement followed through, as I will say. Now that he's finding the issues now, he's reissuing the enforcement part of it. But I wanted him to talk about the old stuff. Like, obviously, we're not looking to go after people from four or five years ago. If the issue's still there, then it can be re-violated and obviously. But it can be factored in how you, how many you are. I mean, you know, some of these are gonna be more wake-up calls than anything to everybody, knowing that it's actually going on, which, as you know, will kind of enforce itself to a certain extent. People start to realize it's not just lip service. Other than that, I don't wanna lap there, because I don't wanna. I would just say, if you have a question about a building permit, anyone publicly, call here, ask the question. Javier is out. Obviously, the vehicle's parked outside. More people have asked me about this vehicle, what it's for, who's using it, that's parked out front. Uh, he's using it, he's violating people, finding stuff. And it's nice to hear that some people are fixing the issues right away as soon as they find out about it. But again, this particular person you're talking about, Lance.
Yes.
I know he's had a conversation with Javier. And I, and I did ask Javier, because unfortunately, Brian, he was supposed to come to our last meeting, but had to cancel last minute, Javier did. But I have talked to him, and since we only have one meeting in December, I'd like for him to come, to just explain to us. I'm also hopefully gonna get our engineer here in that meeting, who can explain the building department side. All right, what else you got, Lance?
That's all I got to say. Well, Diane and I, it's, um, speaking on, I have her go over, on the use of the department vehicles. And you gotta let them, Diane, a bit explain more. But it wasn't about, um, sort of public, no, it wasn't about picking on nobody on a username. When a village resident called me and informed me that they believed that one of our vehicle was like thirty miles away, I did check for the man first. And then I went to try to find out, was it our vehicle? They said it was. Then I started my investigation, which could have been, come out that it wasn't. A village's old vehicle, but the one that looked like it. So the person that texts us went to the wrong end and jumping all over like we're picking on them. We weren't picking on nobody. It's just village, village policy that Diane and I was talking about. And actually, if you read it, Diane and I decided even to talk about it, and we went down in miles, but we gave them more filling. Another wrong use of the vehicle, how long you use it correctly within our policy. So it wasn't to pick on nobody, because yes, they are employees of the village, but we had policies. And so my investigation started before I could come back and explain it to the chief that had to make sure that our car wasn't there. And it come to find that it wasn't our car, so that's why my part of the investigation ended away.
You can't leave it.
That's what his name said. He's just waved.
Going down Highland, down to school.
Make a right on Highland. Again.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Diane, what do you got?
Okay, CBA is back. Looking forward to meeting each month, and that's providing they have a quorum, you know, because they're a short one member, that, that's always jeopardy if somebody, some people can't take it.
Is it a five-member board?
Yes. Five member and two alternates. But right now, we only have four members and no alternates.
I, I'm pretty confident it can be less. I know that there's village boards that are three members.
Yes, it can be.
So if that's gonna affect the ability long-term to vote.
Well, they have nothing before them right now.
Right, I just meant projecting out.
Well, I'm anticipating that some of the people who get violated may wind up deciding they wanna put in a variance application.
Right, right. Yeah, you might see much of that.
So that's why I would really like to get that seat filled. It's our most experienced board, including us. I mean, they really are good. And I would, I think if we were to propose dropping it to a three-member board, they would feel more pressure. And the last thing we wanna do is lose any of them. So if we can all just keep recruiting for that.
I'll post it again. Soon as we get through our Christmas tree lightings.
The individual that I contacted who had expressed an interest in the past, I have not heard from. But I decided to wait until after the holidays, because I did mention in the letter that, you know, we realize this is a busy time, and if you wanted to wait to be appointed until January, that's something we could accommodate. So he may have taken that to mean that he didn't have to get back to me until then. So I'll reach out again after, after the first of the year. Um, just a reminder about the historical society. They are having their holiday open house on Sunday, December the eighth, from noon to three-thirty, at the Harding House. They will be having some basket raffles, and they, donations are welcome. So if anyone would like to donate, you don't have to donate a whole basket if you have items you would like to donate. You know, somebody gave you this alarm clock, and you're not gonna use it, whatever the case, maybe you could drop it off here, and Christine will let them know that it's here. Local businesses. This Saturday, November the thirtieth, is Small Business Saturday. Please don't forget that. It's meant to be a day to show our appreciation for the small businesses, because they are the backbone of the village. And I would ask, not just on Saturday, but that's a good way to kick off the holidays, remember that every dollar spent locally this holiday season helps support our entire community. It employs our people, it keeps our businesses here, and it increases our sales tax revenue. So we wanna be not going on the internet and doing the easy thing if we can possibly support and get some of our gifts here from the local businesses. If there's no items that they're selling, and you'd be amazed at how many things you can find in that part. If there's no, no items that they're selling, and you'd be amazed at how many things you can find in that hardware store that are not hardware type of items, so there's lots of gifts to be gotten, but if you can't find anything else, gift certificates to any of the local businesses, always make really good holiday gifts. The vehicle and gas policy. Lance mentioned that mayor at our last meeting asked us to look into it, to get together and, um, take a look at the last revision, which was only about two years old. What I've given to all the board members is what we're proposing for revisions, so that you can take it back and think about it. But just to really briefly, and Rory, I don't know if you have a copy.
I just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
One of the things that came up, and this was what Lance had been questioning, was there wasn't anything that really stipulated, if you go down to the first red line, it starts out, these vehicles may be used for transportation unrelated to village business. If and only if, and it said, the village official will be able to immediately respond to emergency location. And in looking at some other municipalities, it did not, ours wasn't, it's definitive, it didn't give any exact amount. So we talked about it, we felt that thirty miles would be reasonable, that's at least a half an hour to respond. Thirty miles when you did the, the circle takes you past Harman, past Milford, I mean, so if you're going to be going farther than that, it's not really reasonable that you're going to be able to get back that much more quickly than, uh, if you were in your own vehicle. So, um, we're recommending putting in that the destination is no more than thirty miles from the village. Thus utilizing such vehicles for transportation to, from officials' work would not ordinarily be authorized. That line was in there before, but without ordinarily. And then you can see what the changes are. That if an official wishes to utilize the village-owned vehicle to take to and from work, there are certain stipulations that they would have to make, meet. And it, it basically is requesting from the village board and showing proof that they would be able to respond from, from that location. So the, everything else stays the same. The, we added back in the paragraph that used to be for the animal control officer, now says code enforcement officer. Um, but added another sentence based on the mayor's request. It says, in addition to vehicles referenced above, village owns and maintains vehicle used primarily by the code enforcement officer, and this is the addition. But may be utilized by other village officials and employees for official village business. That way, if Christine or Kate were taking it to run to the bank or whatever, it's right there that that's perfectly fine. And there's a mild sheet kept in it, and since the code enforcement officer is the primary user, he would be the one responsible for turning in the sheet at the end of the month to Christine and get them anyway. And then the only other thing, as long as we were looking at, um, the gas part of it, the fuel on the back. The old policy said that each fire chief was authorized to fill up one time, once a week. And when that was written, which was a lot of years ago, I don't think any of us realized that while the chief is on the scene, the car is running. So once a week, if they're going out to a lot of medical calls and things, may not be realistic. So we are proposing in good faith here to, to raise that to six times a month, no more than six times a month. If it's, the, um, card is used, if the gas card is used more than six times in a month, the person using it, who is issued, is expected to make up the difference. Unless they come to the board and explain the reason that it was more, and that has happened years ago when this first woman took it there. They just sent us something that said, you know, we had thirty-one medical calls and this is why it's higher, and that was the end of it. We, we can attach that to the, uh, answer and then we're covered. So again, take it, look it over, have Rory look it over and, uh, we can decide what we want to say.
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
I don't know, because I've never filled up down there. So I'm just asking you because you fill up. So if you go down to the town highway garage, do you put your miles in that?
No.
System, it's just a number.
Just, your, your ID number.
That would save it, okay.
What truck number it is and what pump it is.
Okay.
That's it.
No, all right, I just was curious, I was thinking that might have been a wind-up, okay, all right, thank you. What else you got Diane?
The, it just, I know it's further on the agenda, but just my comments on the water law, do you want that, or you want me to wait?
You could do it now.
Okay. The changes in the base rate that were proposed, uh, through our consideration. I think we had some discussion about the fact that that isn't really going to hit the mark that we want. Because it would significantly reduce the water revenue. And the more I talk to Christine about it, the more I think it's, it's probably time that we need to sit and look at the entire water law. Because there are undoubtedly other areas of it that need to be revised. So I'm just proposing that, um, we've had a table doing anything with this right now. And hopefully maybe have a workshop where we can all sit down and go through the whole law and say, you know, is it just rates that need to be changed or are there other things within here that we need to, we need to tweak?
From like an antiquated standpoint, like they're, they're not functional or like would, I, I, I read it.
I don't know, I haven't read cover to cover for, in a long time.
It's, it's, it's a quite a, um, quite a read.
Yes.
I know there's redundancies and whatnot, but I didn't know if there's anything that you would.
No, I haven't, I haven't, it's just that when I realized, we were trying to, I think, do it as easily as possible just by changing the rates, because then it's not, then it's not changing the.
I, I always get concerned of Frankenstein-ing a law.
Yes.
You know, one word here might have tied up here, and if I don't know the, the reason it was structured that way, that's what I get concerned, that's why I recommended that route. But you could do that and still put on a review.
In going over it and reviewing it, we may decide, well, it's fine as it stands.
Sure.
But this might be better wording for how we, we have it on the rate thing.
Oh yeah, no, I think, I think if you, I, I was trying to, I guess, get it where it could get done.
Yes.
And then a lot of, like, I don't wanna have paralysis by analysis, right? Oftentimes I could perfect a law, it would take me five years and then it's like moot, you know? So I don't know where that balance is with everybody, that's kinda.
Yeah, and until we sat down and went through it, I don't know. Did Christine or, or Brian explain to you what, what the issue was with the initial proposal? With the zero gallons?
I think we did, right?
Well, it depends on how far into, why don't you, I'll tell you, I, I don't know what exactly you're gonna say, so why don't you just tell me?
There are many, many houses throughout the village who, throughout the course of a year, have a zero gallon rating. Because they're in Florida, because there's nobody living there at that time.
Not even a drip, they don't even drip to a gallon?
Yeah, like if, if they're, say, away through winter or if we have a house that's vacant.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that's like on the market, vacant or something, so.
Okay.
So that, you know.
So that really doesn't work.
I think it's wording of these people are hooked up to the water system.
Yeah, yeah, sure, then I do have to.
And the people that my concern is are not hooked up to the water system.
And that's, that's kinda where I'm at, if we look at the, if we look at the law and say, okay, the wording here would apply as long as this is what we have on the rate schedule. Then that would, that would be.
I, I, I make sense now, when I, when, when we talked, it was, I was on the, I didn't, I didn't know that fact.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Yeah, that was, that was the only issue, is that it was gonna affect a whole lot more accounts than what we were.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's fair. Gee, where do you want me on that right now?
I'm gonna wait till Diane's done and I'm gonna.
That's all I have to say.
I'm sorry, I thought it was, you know, I, I, I didn't know if we.
Here's, I don't wanna table this, I do have no issue sitting down and talking about the water laws. Um, but, or the water law, but I do, I know we're gonna have to get into some building department stuff when Javier and our engineer kind of comes and talks to us. And I think that's gonna be a priority, not that the water isn't, but I think for, and I think as far as the few people that came in to the, or to the audience here and brought up their issues of not being hooked up to the water system and their concern of the water rates going up, that in my mind is a priority, I'd like to take care of them, not that I don't like seeing people in the audience. I'd like to take care of them and then look at the water law. If I, if we had people in here complaining about the current water law the way it is, obviously that would be a priority to me too, but I think in my mind, and again, I'm not speaking for anyone, I would like to make it a priority on how we can work our current water law to make those people that are not hooked into the water system, which is only a handful of people here.
We've only had one complaint, one complaint.
Two, he brought his neighbor.
Okay.
He brought his neighbor and to what he called it, you're, listen, you're right, but I think we've prolonged this and prolonged this and prolonged this for how many meetings?
Unreasonably so.
Yes.
They should have just been told that's the law. I mean, you know, it is what it is. I think Brian, at the very first time it came up, had really a great analogy, and that is the whole ONR thing. That even if you decide you're going off the grid, you're gonna be paying them, you know?
Escape ONR.
Right. I don't know, I just, I think there's a way to accomplish what you wanna accomplish.
I think it's, Christine, you sent Rory, because I had you call other municipalities that are obviously.
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't just an us, Orangeville issue, this is an issue for other municipalities. And I'll even go as far as saying within Orange County. I just feel the wording might be a little different, needs to be changed. But I, I personally don't wanna prolong this after the first of the year, so we can fix this by our next meeting.
What we're just discussing, just, well, just as an aside, about whether procedurally, what needs to go on. I, I, I believe that it has to be done by local law, even though we're not changing the verbiage of the law, that table, I believe ties to that law so much so that it would have to be changed. That being said, um, you could set it down for the public, public hearing if the board so chose to. While, all the while while working on this, including, you know, whether that's a workshop for a time of feedback, myself, maybe Diane and so forth. Or then come here on that day of the public hearing and hash out the last pieces of it. Or you piecemeal it, fix that language in the section about membership or who has to pay into the rates. And then revamp the whole laws and go through it.
Are we at the point, do you feel that we can set a public hearing for it?
Yes, yeah, I do.
Let me say this to you, I believe that.
No?
We have to have what we're gonna be having a public hearing on in our hands.
Okay, so let me, let me, I, you could definitely, I mean, you do have what, does everybody on the dais agree that the language currently doesn't work as constructed? And needs to be tweaked because it, it, and it adds X amount more homes than intended by the law.
Correct, I agree with that.
No, I don't agree, so don't, you can't speak for everyone.
No, no, I, I'm saying, I, I'm gonna ask it again, I actually thought I was saying what you said. It adds more homes than was intended by what is, the fix.
Oh, the, the fix that you were recommending, yes, yes.
That, yes, yes. So, so it, it's not about the table now, it's about the words in, 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 uh, in section six, right?
Right.
Um, which in theory isn't the only section, in theory isn't the only section that needs to be changed.
It should be, it should be.
I, it, it's, I, I don't think you'd be incorrect procedurally in changing, because the, the law was, but I, I don't know what words would need to be changed, so again, um.
Christine, I know you contacted a bunch of other places, do, do you have copies of the language that they use or they?
I do not.
No, it's that they charge.
I just have their opinion, like, not, not their opinion, I don't have their law, I have the information that they email back to me, that I could send out to you.
And, and I did cross-reference and I know Brian did as well, I mean, it's definitely something that goes on in most municipalities that have a similar infrastructure. Which is not every municipality, I mean, it's a lot of talent and, and life, right? So, um, I haven't gotten that verbiage either, although I've gotten rates and I know you got rates, which you sent to me. So, like, I, if you want it done by, but I, I would say that next meeting, you could set it down for the public hearing, but that puts both through your timeline that you're looking for, so. Um, which is, gives me time to continue.
We only have one meeting in the month of December.
Yeah.
It's a part of my report to remind different ones, and that is the ninth. If we have everything set and we do, and we set the public hearing on the ninth, I'm perfectly fine with that. What I would like to do is to contact the people that's being affected by this and have them come down and speak during it, I mean, that's the point.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Like, hey, we're being affected by this.
They, they would be, everybody in the village would be notified, this is a village-wide, it would be a village-wide notification.
So I have no issue and hopefully we'll get all five board members here and we'll, so I have no problem with that.
All right, great, so I'll, I'll, I'll start, run my mind through this and, and if I could borrow yours on it as well?
Just to, and I have no problem with that, and then these section six.
It, you know, I'm gonna give a full, I have to give a full read through the law again, to make sure that tweaking that.
Is not gonna affect.
Right, so start with six, see if we can write it in a, in a very, I don't wanna say lay terms, but not legalese, where it makes sense. This is what the intention is, right?
If you're hooked up, you're paying this, if you're not hooked up, you're paying this.
It could be as simple as that, I just thought if I could, I was trying to take a shortcut, I was trying to simplify, but sometimes that doesn't work.
No, 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 listen, I'm, I'm.
So we'll go back to the drawing board, play around with six, and then we can look and see how that affects the other sections.
There's a very minimal amount of people that are affected by this, and I, and I, I agree with this, there's, there's a handful of people, maybe up to six people, maybe, like, that sounds right, four, five, six, somewhere in that vicinity. Um, okay.
Right now it's four.
Let's just talk about it. Well, there can't be going forward, if you move to the village of a builder by property, you're getting hooked up.
Oh, I understand, I understand it.
Not unless we put it in that section of the law, that's the whole point.
I, I don't disagree, I, I didn't know that that would, I didn't know there was other, I didn't know about a zero, a hooked up user could have zero, I mean, I, that sounds naive, but my brain was literally, I took it literally from, from what you said to, to apply it, so let me play around with it with, you know, any suggestions or something.
We'll talk about it.
And you could like, send us the graphs that we can pick around.
Cool, I've, I've got suggestions, I'm always open.
But yes, because that's what I had, we said we needed to look at the whole thing.
I'm with you, listen, I didn't realize, so in states bas- basically right now, if someone builds a house on a vacant piece of property, if you can find one, that you're not legally, you don't legally have to hook up to our law.
Correct, correct.
That should have been in, a long time ago, that should have been in there. That's not my argument whatsoever, my argument is the people that were grandfathered in, that bought a house that wasn't hooked up and they chose this to continue to use the well.
Okay.
Those are the people I'm worried about, I wasn't worried about like the people lunch at eleven, that's, yeah.
Right.
That's it, all right, listen, the ninth, to be continued. Okay, um, I guess I'll get into my report. The DMV bus got canceled, uh, last Friday, the twenty-second, it will be back, as Carrie said, at town hall on, uh, this Wednesday. Um, it will be back at village hall, I got the new date for December, uh, it will be back here Friday, December twentieth. Unfortunately, due to the weather and especially the weather that Orangeville got, uh, that's why it didn't make it up here. Uh, John and Frank, just to tell you this weekend and, and Lance, we kinda made a little bit of adjustment to the tree lighting. So the tree lighting is gonna happen Friday, uh, as Brian said, at six thirty at the firehouse. We are not going to, at six fifteen, to the park to do the tree. We're now gonna do it directly after the Patriot Tree on Saturday at seven. There was some information that even I got out in the newsletter says, but I'm hoping to get it out there, so. Firehouse Friday, Saturday, we're gonna do the Patriot Tree immediately after, we're gonna like those other two trees down there, so we'll have nice lights down there.
That works.
Um, okay, so enough with that, we'll beat that down. One thing I did wanna talk about, illegal dumping in the back of this building. Something that I wanna bring up and I don't wanna change right now, but I want the board to think about. We, uh, the rules that are up on the fence in the back for people to come in and dump their trash and their recyclables, I believe is five days a week from what times?
Nine to two thirty.
Nine to two thirty, okay, so, um, the nice part is, we approved putting cameras on the building and, uh, we found someone on video dumping illegally. Uh, they dumped some household goods, they dumped some metal, and they dumped some, um, attire and a ring. I kinda got involved on this when I was notified, I called the resident up and they came back the next day and took everything out of our, um, property in the back. Uh, they brought up a very good point, and I just wanna say this, because I haven't said this to John or Frank either. I know if someone moves out of a house and they dump a couch on the street or they put it out there and they move away and it's sitting there for a while, we most likely will eventually go pick it up and take it here. Where do you normally bring it to? You bring it here and you put it in the back, you put it over to the side until we have our trash picked up. Well, this particular person, which you guys already know who, um, thought because there was stuff laying there, that we take that kinda stuff. So I just wanna think about how we can revamp it. I think we do a service, a garbage service and recycling service, um, for every resident here. I just think personally, and again, this is a board decision, not my decision. I just think personally, and again, this is a board decision, not my decision, um, that we could possibly restrict the hours that are back there. Again, I think it works as long as people are coming in and signing in, I know we talked about putting something out for some residents too, and Christine, correct me if I'm wrong, most people are coming to sign in.
No, I wouldn't say no most people, but people are starting to be better about signing in.
I just think we need to revamp it.
Get the word out there more, but people are starting to...
Well, same part about it is the sign that's on the fence, it has all the information on it, no one reads it because of where it is, yeah. I talked about taking it off the fence.
Make it a little more, a little higher, a little more.
And, and I think some signage, try and do it.
Something stupid like that works.
Just, just something for people aren't dumping stuff off, I mean, video is great, but I don't wanna have to...
We also got the big sign that sits on the side of the shed out there, says basically all the same things, and people will still put a TV or whatever right next to it, they don't...
Well, that's illegal dumping, and as I told this resident, that I feel anyone that dumps anything, the police department should get involved and not their one, I mean, you're dumping illegally. There's signage, um, I left it as, come back and pick up your stuff and bring it to the transfer station and get rid of it, that's it.
For most of you people, they realize tires and stuff, it costs the village extra money.
I explained it, absolutely, yeah.
TVs cost the village extra money, get rid of it, you know.
I just, I just feel if that's sitting in the yard on the side and people see it.
Right.
They're gonna be like, that's all I'm saying, is they're gonna be like, oh, a TV, I didn't realize I could drop my TV off, well, you can't, we won't take that stuff. But, okay, let's talk about that, add that to our list to talk about, but let's talk about that. Like I said, we're having, our next meeting is the ninth, um, and then the next meeting after that is gonna be the thirteenth. So, uh, we're gonna have a lot of bills in the month of December. Yeah, from December through January, I would just try to get in here and...
Yeah, I think we're gonna do, have to do it like we've done it in the past, where even though that fourth week of December, we won't have, um, the meeting, we'll have to have bills or... We'll, we'll look at the, um, the holiday calendar and adjust it accordingly and decide when we're gonna do it, but that's okay.
This building is closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, so I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, just to say, I posted it today. And last but not least, what I wanted to add is we are collecting for Toys for Tots. Operation Toy Train will be in Walk Hill on the fifteenth. If everyone got their invitation to the, uh, party, that's also on the fifteenth, but we kinda moved it a little bit, so we can pack up these toys and get them down to the train. Between four oh-five and four thirty-five on the fifteenth, if anyone's interested in taking that ride down there to Walk Hill. I spoke to Frank and John, and I spoke to the fire department, and I spoke to the police department about getting a police escort down, uh, with a village vehicle and a fire vehicle to drop the toys off in Walk Hill. I think it will be good, and, uh, I hope to get a stop here next year. Moving right along. Let's see here, old business, we're, we already kinda talked about this, to be continued to next year. New business, um, amending the current fee schedule. This is in reference to the building department? Christine?
Yes, uh, I think that's the only thing you do, yeah, all of those fees are, are pretty much still the apartment fees, yes.
Okay, we need, you, no correspondence to another list, anyone, right, we're just talking about this, okay, okay. I really wanna wait till next meeting for this one, uh, I had Javier kinda look into some, um, fee schedulings from Walk Hill. Christine was able to pull me, I think, three or four others from villages. I'll put something together and get it out to everyone before next meeting, but I want Javier to come in and talk. There's certain things in there, um, like siding and windows, um, that is not on our current fee schedule, but he makes a very good point about it, and I really wanted to come from them, not from me. So, um, let's just move that if we can to the next, um, meeting, Christine, if we can. And I just wanna say, I believe our fee schedule was last updated in two thousand eighteen, um, and that's what I was looking up. Um, quarterly review, or review assignments, hopefully everyone knows what they're...
Well, these are new, so they don't know.
Well, take a look at it, I'm not gonna read it out loud what they are, because you guys know what they are. Except for Bob Klaus, Bob Klaus, if you're listening to the video when I posted tonight, your bank recs are, are due.
And they do the first meeting in January.
Yeah, I had to, I had to make it faster, because I'm a little behind.
Uh, motions and resolutions, can you read that?
Yes, we have a board resolution, and I did send this out to you guys, I think right after the last meeting, about two weeks ago, a little less than two weeks ago. Board resolution to renew the New York State Volunteer Firefighter Cancer Benefit Program Enhanced Plan for the coverage year of January first, two thousand twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. At the rate of one hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents per firefighter, and to authorize Mayor Harry to sign the proposal. And just so you know, that's the same exact price that it was last year, I cannot...
Which is amazing, something you didn't know. Make a motion that we accept the board resolution as read.
Thank you, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
What else you have?
Motion to hire Christopher Holmberg.
Thanks, right.
As part-time DPW labor pending approval by the Orange County Civil Service and a negative drug, drug screen. I just have to make sure that we have, um, a spot for him under civil service, that's why I put that on here.
Okay, so, just, just to, um, how do I say this in a nice manner? DPW is looking for a new part-time person. It's possible that one of their current people, so I guess what Christine is saying, there's a certain amount of spots. So in order to hire this person, Frank, we would have to create a new spot. If someone was to leave, for whatever reason they choose, they're part-time, um, then we can fill the spot with this person. But if we, instead of creating a new position, so what's the likelihood that that is gonna happen to, that's the question?
Well, we got one guy, and we went back in the summertime. This is where I get upset with the county, I, this is where I have, I don't, myself, it, what does it matter to the county that we have six guys on our party? Because we can alternate, some guys can only work certain days, other guys can only work overtime. To me, I live in the county, whatever.
That's county, that's...
But we have one guy who mainly works for us, I'm gonna reach out to him and say, are you planning, because he's in college.
Cause he said he might not come back.
He might, he might not come back, but he was gonna let us know.
Okay.
So we can take him off.
So, but what I would suggest for that is to take him off, and create, if he wants to come, or if he wanna hire somebody else in the summer, create a seasonal, just, you know, like they talked about at that training that we went to. Create a seasonal position, because if you create the seasonal position, they can, I think if I remember correctly, it's a certain period of time. But they can basically work as many hours during that period of time. The other thing that I told Frank today that we have to keep in mind is that we only schedule, we only budget it for a certain amount of hours. So whether, no matter how many positions you have open, whether you're dividing those hours by two people or ten people, those are the amount of hours that we have.
Not as the amount of money.
And money, hours equals the money, yes.
Okay. So... I, I guess, I guess we can amend this motion a little bit to, what's the plan? Are we gonna take the person that's seasonal off and kinda create a seasonal thing, and then if he wants to come back?
To take the summer seasonal guy off and put a winter seasonal guy on.
But he's not seasonal now.
No, you gotta create.
So we wanna remove him since he's not available.
Correct.
And then if he comes back in the summer and you want to hoten, he's asking to work, and you have work for him, or someone else to take his place, then we can add a seasonal person. But you do have to get him to give you a letter before I can take him off. Email, you can just email him, that's fine.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question.
He's a kid, so I'm sure he...
Yeah, but he's not available for work if I'm sorry, that's always gotta, it's always gotta tell you.
And I would just tell him, listen, I don't have a problem if we wanna create a, a civil service position for seasonal, we could do that, right? We could do that, just explain to him, listen, we're taking you off this, but do, you know, to, uh, I don't wanna say, for clarification of your position, and you wanna come back, just let us know, and then let us know, that's all.
Well, if I don't understand Christine correctly, that, it could work to his benefit, because right now, as a part-time person, he's limited in the number of hours he can work a week. If he's a seasonal employee, that might not be the case.
Well, I, I, I agree with that statement, but there's still X amount of money in the budget for that person, so it's not like we can just hire a seasonal person.
Right, we have a budget.
Right.
For them.
That's fine, all right, so we're good, so we'll amend it a little bit, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, who wants to put the motion up amended?
Well...
I'll reach out and amend, uh...
What has to be amended on it? Because it is still pending.
It's not as part-time, it says a seasonal, that's what we're checking.
Oh, this guy's gonna be part-time.
Part-time, I'm sorry.
The guy we're hiring will be part-time. Pending the resignation of...
Whoever the other person is.
Okay, so who's saying it?
But Diane.
Diane?
Diane made a motion, she's gonna be a weird...
She's gonna break it down.
Yeah, we're gonna break it down, all right.
It's how hard it is, Christopher Holmberg is part-time DPW worker pending the resignation of...
Evan Daly.
Evan Daly, and a negative drug screening test for Christopher.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that okay?
Yes. All right, uh, audience participation?
Mayor Vezprezepa, Otisville, Saturday, no, Sunday, October, December one, there's a vendor fair down at the Pocatello Firehouse, sponsored by the Ladies Auxiliary. It goes from ten to three. We have twenty, I believe it's twenty-three vendors, and they're all different, come out and support our Ladies Auxiliary. The following Sunday, December eighth, from seven AM to noon, the, the fire company is ho- is doing a breakfast with Santa. The Ladies Auxiliary will have a small fifty-fifty, will have a small tricky trade possibly, come out and support us there too. There are posters out, it's up on Facebook, the prices are different depending upon your age. We have a lower price for seniors, we have a different price for kids, I don't remember, the price is up and... But that's from seven to noon on Sunday the eighth, come out and support, and one of your local fire companies, thank you.
Anyone else, public participation, okay? I'm gonna do, no, I'm gonna do this, um, I'm gonna do closing comments from us, and then we have to go into an executive session. So, oh, you know what, sorry, you're right, I kinda forgot about that, so, let's just approve the bills first, thank you, Brian. Can I get a motion to approve the bills for general? Uh, nineteen thousand five hundred nineteen, or five hundred and ten dollars and forty cents. Water, three thousand one hundred nine dollars fourteen cents, fire, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety cents, and capital, two thousand two hundred twenty dollars.
Pay the bills, that's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, closing comments, Diane, what do you have?
Just to commend Brian for his patience and, and working with Vinnie on those upgrades. It, it's interesting that they're, they're basically, it sounds like complaining that our lights don't match their inventory, and it's their inventory, so that's not on us, so, uh, good job. It'll be great having all the new lights here, I would suggest though, any future upgrades, we look at some of the really dark places in the village, like Shovel Street and Field Road. Because some of them are like really dark. And the only other thing is, I believe the Otisville Fire Company has breakfast with Santa on the same day as Pocatello. Ours is from eight to twelve, so you could actually kinda have breakfast to a point, lunch at the other, I guess. I was told that, um, at the Otisville Fire Company's breakfast with Santa, they will have a professional photographer there, who will have all of the props, you know, the, this velvet, uh... Settee, everything. And she is doing this gratis because she said she feels very strongly about volunteer fire, uh, departments. The pictures will be free to the people who have the pictures taken, if they would like them emailed, and I think if they want them printed on the spot, it's gonna be available, but that they would have to pay for it. So it's, it's a really nice perk, and, uh...
And they have a great flyer out about it, which we shared, but, sure, okay.
That's it.
Lance, what do you have?
Brian, um, check, you can check to find out, like, there's one neighborhood in the village with no streetlights.
One? One road?
Penny lane.
Penny lane.
Doesn't have streetlights, and, and the well. Because all the utilities are underground.
Right, yeah. All underground.
Right.
I think there's another one, but Craigland, I think.
Craigland's a private, private, that's why. Yeah.
What do you have?
Yeah, the answer.
There you go. Hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving, thank you DPW for keeping up with all the, uh, snow and all that nonsense. And, uh, if anyone comes across with any storms or anything, because I did come across this with my lights, if you see trees on the lines, call that in, because that is like, super bad. And I know there was a little outages and stuff throughout, and that's part of the problem, so, that's it.
All right, um, all I have is a happy Thanksgiving, and, uh, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Make the motion to go to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
And we'll be taking no action when we come back out.
We'll be taking no action, then we don't come out this month.
How long did it take for them to put that transfer on back online for you, Lance?
No, my line's blank.
Yeah, you were so good.
I cursed him out first. So you did. I tell you the name.
Good, camera's on.
All right, I saw that, nice.
Yeah, we, we just picked it up to that.
All right, I saw, um, who has one like that? Norman Mann has one of those like that.
Yeah.
That same fellow, let me go and take care of this real quick.
We have one copy that we have, the main one in it, I don't have, I don't have a copy of the, just the galvanizer, I'm gonna give it to them. Yeah, just give it to them.
We had some stuff over there, we had Christine, Jell-O. It's crazy, it's crazy that, I was, I was gonna bring it up to you, it's crazy that we had to do this by the fifteenth, they had it out in the mail. But the Orange County Health Department, there's a certain, certain thing that I have to fill out, and that doesn't have to be planned until July.
We would have been fined, no...
We would have been fined if this wasn't mailed out. I mean, I'm gonna send it to them, I'm gonna send it to them anyway.
Yeah, or use the website, something's there.
And send it to them, but I haven't thought July was sent. And we even, you know, they were even bringing that up at the, at the motor class about it.
No, no, not that.
All right, I'll see you tomorrow then.
Yes.
It's...
And Diane, it's, it's a, it's a quarter bingo, right?
Yes, so bring your quarters.
No, trust me, I got enough of those, thank you.
Come here, shoes untied like a little kid.
That's his new truck.
Oh, Ryan, that's right, you got it, yeah.
He totaled his other one.
He totaled his other one?
Yeah.
Deer's...
Deer, oh my God, it was bad.
Wow.
Totaled.
It's amazing how that, just that little, you know...
Right, that's total, right.
No, what happened was when he, when the deer ran into it, it pushed this vendor into the door, bent the frame.
Oh, okay.
Door frame, yeah.
Bent the door frame, and once the door frame was bent...
That was it.
But trying to get the title to color part where it needed to be, wow, in the ass. It ended up going from here to Newburgh, from here to White Plains, to Queens, to Newburgh, they said that the zip was wrong.
Bro, you going to college here, or what?
I'm already in college.
You're in college, what you taking?
Political science, I can't believe the sentence is almost over now. I still, I still remember...
Dude, you out of school now? Your life will go by like... I graduated, this year will be thirty-seven years. Okay, then he goes... He go quick, once, that life was, your life, huh?
You go quick, once that life is, you're like, huh, what happened?
Because now, it's like, I can, before the next semester starts, I can make my own schedule, which I already did.
Right.
And stuff, and it's, it's, I don't know. It feels different though, it's not like, I don't know, it's like a different form of school, but it's not.
You're going to Oxford now, right? And then you're gonna go to New Paltz afterward, or you're gonna?
Oh, I have no idea.
You know, like.
I, I'm gonna start thinking about that probably.
Before you know it, you're gonna have to.
Yeah.
You don't wanna be into your second year already, trying to figure out where you wanna go.
I'm about to be looking it up by, over the winter, I know that. It's just so scary.
We got it all straightened out and, ugh. He's been looking for a month for the, for a vehicle. We couldn't get a rental because they would only give it to us for two weeks. And for one, the first week, I was living, I was living in the state, so he doesn't really need it.
Right.
Unfortunately, because I'm, I don't work, I don't usually go anywhere at night, or if I do, I have to get a ride from somebody usually. We didn't really need the rental. It just, he put in a month, just over a month, he put almost two thousand miles on my car. No, fifteen hundred miles on the car. It's like, jeez. But my car runs fine. The truck is big enough for him, but it's small enough that if I had to, I can drive it. Unlike his other truck.
Right.
Yeah, I read one, I just, I, I couldn't drive it, it was just too big for me. This one doesn't, it's got bigger tires, but doesn't sit as high. His other truck was lifted more. This isn't as, it's lifted, but it's not as bad. And it's also got the short bed, and so the, and so the long bed.
Good.
One thing is I had to get a different MP3 player because it doesn't have an auxiliary jack, and my MP3 player doesn't do Bluetooth. I said, well, take it. And then MP3 player.
What year is it?
It's a twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen?
It's got forty-five, forty-one thousand miles on it. Total cost was thirty-eight, we're financing twenty-six. I had to pull money out of my account, out of my, um, trust account because, well, we got seven grand from.
From the other, yeah.
Seventy-six hundred from, you know, from his total. He had a P N four hundred, so that made it eight thousand. With financing twenty-six and eight thousand, we couldn't afford the payments. We can barely afford the payments now.
Yeah, right. It's crazy.
We're paying, he's doing a, uh, smart payer, he pays every paycheck. Hundred and twenty-two dollars a paycheck. Pays it off a little quicker, not as much interest.
I bet it, it, it doesn't see it as a bad of a, you know, a punch doing it that way, you know, it's just, that's the.
It's just making sure he's got the mon- that the money's in there that Friday when they go to Poland.
Well, and your paycheck being deposited that by, on Thursday, you know, Thursday or Friday.
The paycheck, his paycheck actually gets deposited Thursday morning, he gets paid, technically he gets paid Wednesdays. Paycheck is there on Thursday morning for use, but payday is the Friday.
Right.
It's all, you know, it's the union's, it's union stuff. So.
Does he get paid every week or every?
He's, he's weekly.
And every two weeks, I think, so.
I did it, I did it for the full time, I did it every year I worked. Every two weeks I got a paycheck. But, uh, you know, this one, you know, they start coming out on, it start, they start taking it on Friday, but we don't have the account information yet. So it's just going into a, it's a holding account. And once we get the account information, then we call them up and say, here's the account stop, so you can actually transfer it to where it belongs, so. It's, yeah, it's a hundred and twenty-two dollars a week and, yes, she takes home just over seven, so it works out. And there's usually more than eight hundred dollars in the account anyway. But it's just. It was just a pain trying to, it was just a pain trying to get all the paperwork involved, you have all the paperwork, getting the truck.
Nothing's easy anymore.
Not easy anymore.
And I took copart through weeks to come and pick the stupid thing up. We told him it was ready, go take it. It just, I think what pisses him off is he had just replaced the transmission in July. Fifty-one hundred dollars for the new, for a new transmission. He immediately just put brand new tires on like a month ago. Can't do anything about the transmission, but he took his tires off. He has two seventy-five sixty eighteen inch, that's four of them. He's looking, you know, he paid a thousand for them. They have, he said, you know, maybe five hundred miles on them. So he's looking to get, you know, eight hundred, eight, nine hundred dollars for the four.
Not a bad price.
He wants a thousand, but I don't think he'll get the thousands for used.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah, you ain't nobody to get.
They won't give him a thousand for used. If we can get eight hundred, that's at least something.
Right. At least he did something.
All right, head home, time to go to bed. At least I got, I don't have to worry about changing seats, I don't have to worry about putting the heat on in the seat, I don't have to worry about changing radio stations. Cause he's so big, he's so tall, he has to have the seat all the way down and all the way back. And he doesn't like the heat. So every time I had to go drive the car, I'd raise the seat up, bring it all the way forward, turn my heat on, change the radio station.
I love my heated seats.
I use mine in the summertime.
My back, it all feels excellent.
Oh, yeah.
And honestly, I didn't think I'd like it, but I love the heated steering wheel, too.
The heated steering wheel, I don't have. But I do have the heat, you know, the heated mirrors, which is wonderful in the wintertime. I do have where the windshield wipers sit, that's heated so that your windshield, so that your windshield wipers don't stick. They turn it on before you start the windshield wipers, it melts the snow off of, the snow and ice off of where the windshield wipers sit. I should've held out and gotten the remote start, but beggars can't be choosers.
Well, that one, that remote start's nice, too.
Yeah. But I've been living with it, without a remote start for five years, so. Mom and dad bought that truck, that, my little super four B, outright. It was the very first car I had that had no mileage on it. I've always gotten either my parents' leased cars when they're up, when the lease was up. Or bought a used vehicle that had, you know, at least one on it prior to me. This car had fifty-eight miles on it when I picked it up.
Actually moving around the parking lot, that's all.
No, it actually had to come from another dealer.
Yeah.
I even posted on Facebook, my very first, brand new to me, brand new car with fifty-eight miles on it. Which was nice. I've had very little problems with it. Until this past summer when the raccooning went. And, and the warranty on it expired six months prior.
That's how it works.
That's it, yeah.
Six months.
Yep.
All right, let me get home, cause then we'll go take my night meds and get to bed, maybe I can sleep tonight. When he's home, I don't sleep well.
You're so used to him working, and he's not there, and you're.
He's on, he's on two nights a week, and those two nights I don't sleep well. Now this can have, I like the fact that they put the wall there this way and. Somebody's using, you know, you don't see.
Yeah.
The, uh, the toilet that easily. And then, if somebody's in there, it then has a sound out here, so you don't hear. But the color, I like the color. Because I haven't been here since it was renovated.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cause I've been.
It's bright, real bright here now, without the paint, you know, the panel, knocked it down a little bit, it's dark, but now.
A picture that they have of Charlie. What it was, was Charlie and Linda, and then. And Karen's son C R, the three of them were together. You were able to crop it and blow Charlie's picture up so that they could get Charlie, only Charlie, cause, did they like that? They didn't, because Vietnam was not considered, they wore, they would didn't peek pictures of the incoming servicemen. So, you know, it's what anybody had in their private collections.
Exactly.
But they were able to get that, and it came out nice. All right, let me get home, see what he's up to. I just hope you remember his toolbox in his truck, because he likes leaving his truck unlocked. And I know we've had.
Yeah.
Issues.
Yes. Yep.
And he keeps, he keeps his toolbox in there, he keeps stuff in the back, you know, cause he's got the, instead of the cab. He keeps it in the back a little bit. And just locked it because you never know who's, cause the truck's unlocked, they'll come in and wipe everything out.
Right.
Yes, we have the camera, but you can't always see.
Right, exactly.
All right, let me get home.
All right.
Very well asleep.
I got another meeting tomorrow, mate. Hey, did you see that, that, that?
The thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Take a picture of it tonight. When I did the water sample. Well, don't believe it, the law, the vehicle law is, the older one was fifty miles.
Yeah.
Now they wanna change it to thirty.
Yeah. Cause it has another way to fight it with, like, thirty, because it would give you.
Right. More rain tomorrow. Some rain, rain tomorrow. High fifty-four now, then the rest of it, we got Tuesday and Wednesday, and from then on it's gonna be. You're talking snow for Thanksgiving Day.
Yeah.
It's gonna be in the thirties, nineteen eighteen. I gotta get that heat out of that house.
And this should've alerted off.
Huh?
Say, water off.
Yeah. Well, I got the tube for that heater, but I gotta stretch it out, cause there's a few holes in it, and I gotta tape. We haven't, we haven't had a tape, that wakeboard tape, the alone tape? We did, there's those on the shelf in there.
Yeah, for what I haven't seen in a long time.
Might bring it, it's in the truck again, and it's for the backseat. Sneak it in tomorrow morning. Care to let it out of that truck, too?
Well, hopefully she goes down there on Wednesday and. Where's your vehicle? Talk to Abby up?
No, I need to talk to him yet, no.
Go! I want the letter to go under your foot. I ain't going up and do a trotting anyway. I guess Subway's expensive anymore. They were at Willie's Subway tonight for dinner, and, uh, he's going on his trip tomorrow. So he got another, uh, a little, a little bag of chips and soda, and Johnny wanted one. It was fifty-nine dollar for three Subway's. Three Subway's, I'm like, you got it.
What's that, what's it called there, um, Jersey Mike's? That ain't cheap either.
No. Well, these are Jersey Mike's. You do a sandwich.
Right, this was.
Yeah, they're like this, you know? I don't have a problem paying for a sandwich if it's a sandwich, you know?
That's crazy. That's crazy.
Yeah. Hmm, just gonna give it one minute. I'll just give it one more minute.
What's going on, what the hell is going on? See, we're gonna have to.
You gotta do that banner for your father yet.
Yeah, I know, I was looking at these and thinking about it. I gotta find a picture though. I don't know if Cece's got anything. I have a picture. On my phone.
Coming up close, John's still here.
Yeah, he's.
Look at this trooper, oh, I'm Frank.
You guys are troopers.
It's very bright in here, that actually caught me like.
Wait, oh my god, you weren't here yet, we were talking about that.
No, this is, no, I'm like shocked.
Yes, we need, we need to do something.
You just realized that?
That's a really. I just probably, I think this is my first.
Hey, you wanna know the sad part? The lights were always here.
Are you serious?
No way.
Yeah, I'm serious.
No crap, dude.
The walls are brighter.
The walls are brighter.
Wall is brighter, and that train track is new.
All right, can I get a motion to come out of?
I make the motion to come out of the session.
Second.
All in favor? All right, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Let's go for close of meeting now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Someone's texting me, it is time to go. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Have a happy Thanks.